Welcome to the regular board meeting of the St. Peter School District. It is Monday, December 20th, 2021 at 6:30 PM and we are in the Governor's Room of the St. Peter Community Center. I call this meeting to order and can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before there's a motion to adopt the agenda, I would just like to welcome Bill Cowt. This is your first regular school board meeting and Director Hager's last school board meeting. So, welcome and congratulations, Vicki. We'll talk more later, but wanted to acknowledge that. Also, wanted to look to see if we could move action item number one, which is consider approval of the 2020-21 audit from first place to last place because our auditor is talking to several school districts tonight and they're in Cleveland and will not be here until about 7:15. So unless we want to sit in awkward silence for the next, or 15 minutes or so, we could move that to the end, that would be, that would be great.
I have a question about the agenda.
Yes.
Do, where we do not have a COVID update tonight on the agenda?
We-
Because I thought that's what we decided at the study board session.
That is not what I thought.
We really need to record the study board sessions because I, I'm either losing my mind and then I need to go to a doctor or things are getting, because I was just really surprised it wasn't on there, but I'll just ask my questions during my report.
Sure. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change of moving action item number one to action item number seven?
Yes, so moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into the truth in taxation presentation. If there is anyone here who wants to speak specifically to the truth in taxation presentation, please let Sarah know. With that, Tim?
Thanks Chair Leonard. As we're required to do annually, our truth in taxation meeting, which is kind of an update on a few things, mostly the levy that you'll be asked to certify later tonight and if any members of the community have questions on that. Basically, in the packet, there should have been approximately six pages concerning the truth in taxation. Typically, most years, it's really close to what was passed in the preliminary levy in September. This year, it's a little bit different due to the referendum passing in November. It changed by the amount of the referendum, which is different than it's been the other years. I'll just try and preface it with that and then walk through this a little bit. We did talk about it quite a bit, hopefully, at the Finance Committee meeting earlier this week or last week. And, but any questions, just feel free to ask. Basically, the first page just shows kind of where we were at with the levy. This year's levy with the new information from the referendum passing, the operating referendum in November, is about $7,115,818. Last year was about, it was $6,797,000 for a change of $318,007. So if you remember, in September, the levy, the number was, was quite a bit lower, or a little bit lower due to the referendum not being on there and our, our authority had expired. So this is updated with that and we'll get into the exact numbers in a little bit here. Basically, two and, pages two and three are just kind of some, you know, talking about the presentation. Page four is kind of a history of our levies over the last 10 or 11 years, in kind of a chart that goes with it. As you can see, it's, you know, some years it's up, a couple of years it's even been down a little bit. And then, if you go back, usually we did 10 years, but I left the 11th year on because if you went back to 2011, that was when the voter referendum that was approved came on the first time. And you can see it went up at that point too by actually a little bit more than it went up this year. So it's been pretty consistent since the bond referendum came on in 2015 with our amounts of levies. You know, levies come on, levies come off, the individual ones, and we'll go into that. But you can see kind of the chart of where she's, she's went over the last few years. Page five is kind of, those of you that have been around for a while have seen this a couple of times every year. This is kind of just an itemization of all the different levies that we do have that make up the major levy or the different components. It's exactly the same as we seen in September. We left things the same except for three items. The first would be line number nine, the operating referendum, the voter approved. As you can see in column G, the preliminary levy, it was just $6,000 and that was basically adjustments from other years. And then with the passage of the referendum that gave us an additional $700,000, $774,000 that it increased, it's up about $450,000 from last year because the referendum increased from $182,000 to $410 per student if, you know, if you guys, I'm sure you all remember that, we talked about that at length. So that changed. The other two components that did change somewhat are line number 16, which is called the equity levy. And that basically tries to balance out the levies between school districts that have an operating referendum at certain sizes and those that don't. This one went down because our levy went up, the equity levy went down approximately 40, about $42,000 from September and about $16,000 from last year. The third component that changed just a little bit was the LTFM portion of the levy and I believe that reduced just slightly from what we seen in September and that was mainly due to adjustment the state had made with that. And that's on line number 30. We had it at $404,000, it's $401,000 now, so it just decreased slightly because they changed their calculations a little bit. If you go down to the bottom, basically, the levy then in column H that you'll be asked to certify, their Finance Committee is going to recommend is $7,115,818 and it's an increase of about 4.6% from last year. So even with the increase in the operating referendum, the increase in the levy was not, was not huge. We had a couple of components roll off, if you remember, from September, the lease levy and a couple of other things that went down, so it's a little bit less than, you know, the other items would have been. So we can come back to that in a little bit, but I just wanted to touch on page six. We're also required to kind of update you on the budget that we did for the year as part of the truth in taxation meeting. And this is the adopted budget that was presented last June for 2021, 2022 school year with the different items that we talked about. We'll be updating this, you know, after the first of the year, a little while in with the audit results are in that we'll, you know, Tom from ABD will talk about later, but this is kind of the adopted budget we had and then we'll adopt it or we'll revise it with the new updated numbers in the coming months. So I guess the main part of the truth in taxation and the levy presentation, you know, later on will be page five. I don't know if there's any specific questions on that or, you know, it came in kind of where we were projecting if the referendum passed, the numbers were fairly, you know, were, were pretty close that our financial guys had given us. And, you know, so we're about a 4.6% increase for the year and we left everything else pretty much the same from September.
Did you say there was a page two and three?
Say that, what?
Is there a page two and three or not?
Yeah, there should be, there should have been in the packet. It was just, it was kind of just some-
I mean, I didn't see it when I looked online, there was no page two and three and I thought maybe that was just a fluke, but I don't have it in my packet either.
I'm sorry, it just, it basically was just, I'll hold up, it wasn't a lot of information, just kind of an outline of what we had, the presentation index and then just an outline of this here. So not a lot of detail on it, just kind of outline or more of a index of what we had. I apologize for that, I thought it had gotten in.
Well, it's just updated online, so if anybody looks, they can see everything.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, hearing no questions and no request to speak to this agenda item, that concludes the truth in taxation presentation. Thanks, Tim. We would consider requests to speak to any agenda item. I'm not sure if people are here to do that, but if they are, please fill out a card and give that to Sarah. Now we're to the approval of consent agenda items. If there are any items that folks wish to pull out, that is great if we want to vote to approve the consent agenda as a whole. I don't necessarily want to pull anything out, but I do want to highlight three things that are in the consent agenda. Two gifts to the school district that we really appreciate. St. Peter High School class of 1969 has donated $1,064.31 from the class and then Steve Niels added an additional $300 to that. And we have another donation of $1,485 and it's titled "The Bernadine Thompson Memorial." And Bernadine Thompson is a family member of a former North staffer and that money is designated to help North kids go on field trips. So we're excited about that and really appreciate it. The third item that I want to pull out is the resignation of our Technology Director, Chris Overbow. He's served the district super well over the last few years and unfortunately for us has taken another job closer to his home and we just appreciate everything that he's done for St. Peter and wish him well in his next job.
Not, well, kind of related to this consent agenda, but curious, like everybody else, I'm sure we're looking for employees, specifically paraprofessionals and I'm wondering how many, I mean, what's our, what's our dream number or how many are we short?
Well, I know that we have several candidates who are being interviewed tomorrow for some of our positions, so we are seeing an increase in the number of positions. I, I'd have to do some double checking with our team to see how many positions we have left open. Maybe that's something that you can share during your report.
Okay.
Anyone want to offer a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
It's very dysregulating.
We will move to our students' spotlight and we have Quinn Rosbach with us today. Principal Graff?
Thanks for having us tonight. I've got Quinn Rosbach with us. Quinn is the perfect example of how powerful St. Peter community is. Quinn has been supporting the community for a number of years now with a little project that she calls North's Closet and she's here to give us an update on how this year is.
Um, hello, thank you for having me. My name is Quinn Rosbach. I'm an eighth grader at the middle school. I organized a winter clothing drive called North's Clothes Closet for people in St. Peter. The first time I did this, I was in fourth grade. I started it because I wanted to help the students at North that looked cold during recess. I continued to do it every year except for last year due to COVID-19. On November 19th and 21st this year, I was fortunate enough to do North's Clothes Closet again. This is the first year I've ever held the event on two separate days. The event went very well, there were a lot of donations and a whole wall at North was covered with bags. Setup and cleanup went very smoothly with the help of the Gus Davis Football Team, National Honor Society and my friends from school. People came on both days, so I think in the future I'll plan to do two days again. We ended up having about 140 people come to shop over the course of the two days. This was the first of four years of doing North's Clothes Closet that I really did the planning and organizing all by myself. KUIC News and the Mankato Free Press helped me advertise and I'd like to thank all of the principals at the schools for helping me advertise as well. I've just received a $500 donation from the Mankato Area Foundation, which is very exciting news because I can use it to help North's Clothes Closet grow even more in the future. And I'm really thankful that Mr. Doherty and Mrs. Landsteiner have supported me and helped me get this going since the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Quinn?
I have a comment. I think you're going to go places. That is great.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really magnificent project and thank you so much for taking that on and making our district better and benefiting your fellow students. It's remarkable.
Thank you.
If, if people want to donate to North's Closet, how can they do that? Either with, with money like the Mankato Area Foundation or with clothing or in other ways?
Um, yeah, so we usually take clothing donations much closer to when we actually have the event because it's hard for storage. And money donations, usually that's more close to the event as well. I actually wasn't sure that the Mankato Area Foundation thing was going to happen, so, yeah.
Can they make donations to the middle school, Principal Graff? Or how, how do people get money to North's Closet?
We will have to talk to the CEO and mom. Kind of see how they want to manage that. We would be happy to support in any way possible to keep this going if you think it's an awesome, awesome project.
Great.
Great, yeah, I was approached by the Mankato Foundation like a couple of weeks ago and they asked, because it had to be toward a nonprofit organization, so we're just going to keep it in the North Activity Fund and your market in there and Quinn is going to go purchase supplies. Every year when it comes around, if you're short on boots or coats or whatever, that's what they asked if Quinn could do that one. So we're just going to hold onto it at North, but donations from the CBI dropped off at North, I guess.
Well, that's great and that way it's tax deductible if, if people are looking for that too. That's a nice way to incentivize more donations.
That could also come to the school district and we can put it into North's Activities Fund, just under a designated line item within the account. We would, so we'd serve as the fiscal agent, if you will.
What's your, what's your plan for next year? Do you have ideas or goals?
I'm working on it, maybe like transportation for people that don't really have a way to get to North. So, yeah, thinking about it.
Great.
We can partner with that.
Expansion.
I guess to be when you finish school.
Sorry.
What would you like to be when you finish school?
Um, I really ballet is my passion, so maybe a ballet dancer. I'm also interested in physical therapy and radiology.
Wow.
Were you in The Nutcracker then? I bet you were.
Yeah.
I didn't go to that, but I knew a lot of people who did.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Awesome, thank you so much. Nice work.
Thank you.
Good work, Quinn. All right, our Student Council report. Eva Crock?
Hi guys, I'm Eva Crock. I'm the president of Student Council and we've been working kind of on pod decorations this week. All of the school has kind of joined together and each grade was assigned a pod in our school. We have four, so four for each grade. And we each got a theme from like a Christmas movie. The seniors had Grinch, the juniors had Charlie Brown's Christmas and the sophomores had Elf, the movie Elf. And the freshmen had, and they got the last pick, which I felt kind of bad for them. But judging was today and we find out the results tomorrow and I think the prize is you get like a movie day for one of the blocks. But I'm surprised a lot of kids participated this year. Some years it wasn't, people really didn't like to participate or it was like, no, why would I want to decorate a pod? But it kind of makes, kind of the couple of weeks before we have Christmas break fun and enjoyable because I think there's a lot of, kind of just stress with, like I had a couple finals and like just a couple of things and decorating one day after school just kind of was like stress relaxing kind of. And then we're also prepping for Snow Week, which is coming up in February. And we also, to do that, we're just kind of thinking of dress up days and fun activities to do and how, what we're going to do at the pep fest to kind of keep the school spirit alive. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. So Eva, I know that you've been super busy-
Yes.
-with so many activities.
Lots of activities.
That this is, this is actually your first official report.
It is. I, I came in and I was like, oh my goodness, I have a name tag. I was like, whoa.
So knowing that, we, we know that you have other obligations tonight too.
I do, yes.
So if you need to sneak out early-
Awesome. That'd be great.
That's just fine, but I don't know if anyone else has other questions for you.
Yes.
Who's going to win?
We think the seniors are.
Of course.
We kind of, we had like a strobe light and lots of, like every wall had stuff on it and we felt bad for the freshmen because they were still decorating when the judges were coming.
Who are, who are your judges?
I don't know, there were just like, some teachers showed up and they were like, I'll judge. And I was like, oh, this wasn't like an assigned thing? Oh, okay. I think one, one man I did not recognize and I was like, oh, okay.
You brought in an outsider.
Yeah, I guess, which is probably fair because otherwise it might be biased. So, yeah.
Excellent, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming tonight.
Of course.
Move on to action items. So with that, consider approval of certification of school district levy for taxes payable in '22.
You know, in the finance world, we call this the, this is the Super Bowl week of school finance. It's, it's all the big games.
Gets two of the three big ones out of the year.
And Tim's the quarterback tonight.
Soon to be MVP maybe, never know.
So this, this is, you know, annually required to certify the levy. And we, again, we talked about it at the Finance Committee meeting with the members there. And it's basically the same information we talked about earlier tonight with the truth in taxation, that the levy is the column H. I think there's just the one page, that one page attachment again in the handout. You know, the levy, $715,818 for the year. And I guess I hopefully went over it fairly well at the truth in taxation in there if there's any questions. Otherwise, I think typically what, you know, needs a motion, it needs to be the exact dollar amount and then from that point in, we'll, we'll send it into the state and it goes to the county and gets on the taxes for next year. Actually, you know, sometimes levy gets a little confusing. It's, I always try and think of it as they call it levy 21 and then pay 22 and it goes to our fiscal year 23. So that's how the, kind of, kind of goes on that. So it'll be the taxes that the taxpayers will see next year in May that we're doing tonight.
So just to be clear, that number is $7,115,818.
And actually 12 cents. It didn't get on there.
12 cents, that's all.
Thank you for helping with this. Tim, we appreciate it a lot. I move to approve, or I'm sorry, I move to certify the school district levy for taxes payable in 2022, the amount of $7,115,818 and 12 cents.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. An additional thing that we do every year is consider a resolution establishing combined polling places. Superintendent Johnson?
Yes, this is something that I think it was about four or five years ago, the legislature passed a statute saying that the school district had to do this every year if we were going to have combined polling places in the event of a special election. And so that is what we do each year. And so we just need this resolution passed. Any questions?
Yeah. Is, so is this for next year's election or for the election we just did?
This is for next year. And this isn't, this isn't for the regular elections, this is just if we have to call a special election, which we do.
So on normal, even year elections, we still have the same polling places for outside persons outside of the town? Because I know that on even years, I vote at township.
Yeah. So-
Because there'll be other stuff on the election, right?
Wherever the county votes, there's this coming year.
It wouldn't necessarily be at MVET for outside.
It shouldn't, we wouldn't, we shouldn't have to do anything at MVET, right?
Right. That's what I think, but that's why-
But if we had to have an election outside of a typical county election, then this covers us to do both.
Got it. Okay. I'm just making sure because I-
Yeah, it sounded like we would do, we would vote on wherever the county, you know, county does it, at individual townships.
Yep.
This coming year, we'll do it with the county because it will be a typical election year.
It'll be a regular election.
And we don't, and we don't have any plans for doing anything like bonding or another referendum that we would be calling in, you know, August or, or anything like that.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you. Any further questions? Someone want to move the resolution?
I move the resolution forward.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to move the resolution. Any further discussion? Do I need to read the resolution into the record or can I point to the board packet? Can you point to the packets? Excellent. I will call the resolution. Director Stewie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lopensgaard?
Aye.
Director Hager?
Aye.
Clerk Dixon?
Aye.
Director Cowt?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Resolution carries unanimously. All right, item number four, consider approval of a student resource officer agreement with the city of St. Peter.
Yes, this is, this came to the board in October as a draft. It had gone to a committee with the partnership between the city and the school district and the principals and I went pretty much through line by line to create this. And what it includes is the expectations of our school resource officers and their duties. And then we met with the school resource officers and the police chief and Todd Pravsky, the city administrator, to go through the same so that we had full agreement on all of the duties and expectations with this position. The agreement includes two resource officers as we've had in the past, but because the police department has been understaffed, they've- But because the police department has been understaffed, they've not been able to provide us with a second officer. And in fact, Officer Hughes has been pulled from time to time to cover, uh, community needs. And in conversations with the city, our contract will be prorated to reflect the actual time that they're spending with us. They're hopeful, um, that they'll be able to be fully staffed soon. But as you know, everyone is having issues with staffing recently. And the police department, um, is experiencing that as well. So the, the main financial change in this is that we were covering sixty percent of their salary. And now we're covering seventy percent. And that is to reflect the amount of time that they're spending with the school district versus with the community. That being said, I just, they weren't, they weren't able to be with us as much as we were hoping. So they'll be reducing that or prorating it.
Otherwise, it is the same, um, draft that you looked at in October.
Well, I really appreciate this. I think it represents, uh, a lot of conversation, uh, between the city and the police department and the school district, which, um, which I think is very good. I think this does a much better job of previous agreements, which were more open-ended at just really laying out expectations and, uh, something we can, we can look back and measure, uh, a year from now, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think that's a good thing.
Any questions?
I move we approve the, uh, agreement between the city of St. Peter and St. Peter's school district for the student resource officers.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, I will call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we've got a couple of agreements. We are negotiating with our, uh, bargaining units. And really appreciate all of the work that the negotiations team has put into, uh, that. So would like to consider approval of a master agreement with the custodial unit for twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-three. Superintendent Gronseth or Vice Chair Lopensgaard?
You want me to go?
Go ahead.
Uh, I just want to say that the negotiations team, um, along with the custodial team, um, it was a really good negotiations year and things went really smooth. Um, the big changes are in your packet and in the packet. So, um, with that, I move that we accept the master agreement with the custodians for twenty-one through twenty-three.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to, uh, consideration of approval of a master agreement with food service, uh, unit for twenty-twenty-one, uh, through twenty-twenty-three.
I'll take this one also. Again, uh, extremely good group to work with, um, went really smooth. Appreciate everything that they've done. They've worked extra hard over the COVID past two years. As, as with the custodians, I shouldn't limit that either. So, uh, again, um, really appreciate everybody's hard work and it's oftentimes tedious, but gets the job done. So appreciate that. And with that, I move we accept the master agreement with the food service for twenty-one through twenty-three.
Can I just, I want, so the food service, like, but we have avions. So just explain that to me, I guess. I mean, so, but they still negotiate, but.
So originally when we got avions, that's the, our food service, but everybody was able to stay that wanted to stay.
Ah.
And then there's a.
So those people.
Grandfather, as, as people leave, avions fills the positions.
I got you. Okay.
This group gets smaller and smaller, but they're still there. I think we're down to five.
So some, okay. I got you. I was confused for a minute.
Oh, no.
That's a good question.
That's a great question.
My second.
Motion and a second. Any further consideration, conversation, questions? Hearing none, uh, we'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of approval of a tentative contract agreement for the business manager.
Yes, um, we have been working through all the contracts as member Lopensgaard, um, shared. And so I've been working with Mr. Regner on completing his contract. As part of this process, we did look at a lot of these surrounding districts and comparable districts our size. And tried to make our position more comparable, um, with others. And so, uh, this reflects some of those changes. And you have a summary included there. And, uh, I have to say that Mr. Regner over the, over his career here has done very well for the district, but especially in the last two years. When we have had so many, um, so many changes from the federal and state government, uh, continually having to change our budgets. Um, and if you've ever worked through federal program dollars and all of the forms and compliance issues and finance codes that he has had to really dig in and learn. I know that Mr. Regner, um, if you know what he drives, you know that his car is in the lot, um, pretty continuously even on the weekends. So, uh, really appreciate everything that he does for the district and, uh, glad to have a, a new contract in place with him.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, Tim, thank you for your fantastic work. And I think we'll see that again when we get to, uh, the audit as well, uh, that the district is in really good shape and you, you keep us there. So thank you.
Appreciate you not getting us into trouble. I move we accept the, uh, contract for our business agent for twenty-one through twenty-three.
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Have you heard from Tom?
No, I was, sorry. I'm gonna go check and I'll go.
Are we able to move ahead in agenda or should we take a recess or?
Um, I, we could probably go into the information items and then hop back to the action. That's fine.
Great. Tammy, are you ready to jump in? Thank you. Our first information item is the community and family, family education report and pro con.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be able to be here. So each year I come to you reporting on the previous school years, um, activities and things that happen in community ed. And one of the things I wanted to talk to you about is no matter what community you're in, the community education program looks different. And that's because we really tailor the things that we do to meet the needs of our community. And so if you look at the two pictures here on the very front, the top one is, um, a group of kids from one of our summer art programs. The next one is the R St. Peter group. This is a group of people we've been meeting for the last three years. And we talk about ways to make St. Peter a more friendly place for everyone. One of the things I put in here is strengthening the community, strengthening the schools. We find that people who are involved in community education programs as adults then also feel more linked to the school and more supportive of that. So if you look at the next page, and as you've heard from everybody else who's reported, last year was quite a different year for us. We had to shift all of the things that we did, um, so that we were making sure that we were meeting people's needs. And so I just wanted to talk to you about some of the things that we did. One of the thing, one of the charges that we have is providing a safe, accessible learning environment and opportunities for people of all ages. Normally that means getting people in our school buildings. But due to the pandemic, we had to change things. And so we followed all of the guidelines that were established by the health department. We held virtual hybrid. And then when it was safe, we did have some in-person learning things. Another thing we do, as I talked about earlier, is connecting families to, um, school and community resources. ECFE classes and our early childhood special ed and early childhood preschool programming are ways that we work together and, um, and do that. And as you know, ETI Pravky does an excellent job of coordinating and managing and running all of those programs. We also partner with the, uh, St. Peter Food Shelf to offer the teen pantry. And, um, we collaborate with the senior center and also with the recreation department to provide a variety of services to the community. Another thing we do is help prepare children for kindergarten. Again, this is one of ETI's program, whether it's early childhood screening or the school readiness preschool classes. Those are ways that we help get kids ready so that they are prepared to come to kindergarten and learn. Um, this is one of the ways that we help our school district meet, uh, the world's best workforce goals. Another thing we do is we support working families. And boy, did we ever last year. Um, our saints overtime program usually serves children in an after-school capacity. But last year we were, um, charged with providing pre-emergency childcare to families that qualified. Um, we did this from September through February, all the time when the school was in distance learning and hybrid learning models. We served a hundred and fifty students in grades kindergarten through six. And this was done from seven-thirty in the morning until five forty-five at night. Um, parents that chose to keep their children in our care at the end of the school day did pay for that care. But all of the care that was provided during the learning day was free of charge. Um, to do this, we had to hire a lot of staff. So we had twenty-eight people that we hired. Fortunately, we had a host of college students whose, uh, learning model transitioned to online learning. And so they became our staff. Uh, we had three different locations. In the community center, we had four classrooms, at South three, and at North we had two. Our charge was really assisting students with the daily digital learning that they had, um, which at times could be difficult because we had a whole room full of third graders, some of them in classroom meetings and some of them playing. So, um, teachers had to be flexible with us. Uh, we also helped kids as far as getting their assignments done. And then we provided a lot of enrichment activities to keep them busy. Things like music and art. We were able to go to the public library each, um, week for programming there. Utilize the gym here, the outdoor playground. It was great. And then we also were able to serve, uh, breakfast, lunch and snacks through avions. They were wonderful to work with. I wanted to really thank Shayna C. She is our overtime coordinator. She did an outstanding job of, of managing the staff, working with parents, keeping kids busy. Also Joey Schugel and the recreation department staff, they did a tremendous job of making it easy for us to be here in the building. The principals in the buildings also really worked hard so that we had space and could take care of kids there. And then thank you to all the paras because on Fridays, when we didn't have learning in the school, then all of our kids were in North and South Elementary and we utilized the paras to provide care. So it was a big undertaking, but it was, um, I would say successful and something that, uh, we don't want to repeat though. Moving on, we also expanded the, the learning beyond the school day. And that was done through our after-school enrichment programs. We provide opportunities for kids to explore their interests and develop skills that also lead to better learning during the school day. Some of the things that we did virtually, we offered drawing classes, um, Lauren Schumaker offered virtual band classes. We also had a piano teacher that did virtual lessons. And there were tech academy classes, uh, just, that's just to name a few of them. We provided, uh, um, also our adult basic education did, um, a phenomenal job. If you can see the picture here of Elsa. Um, she did a great job of helping adults. We provided, um, online classes for people. And then we also had people that could come in and have one-to-one private sessions with an instructor. Um, there were thirty-seven adults who participated regularly in our classes. That number is down from what we normally serve. But those were thirty-seven regular attenders. We also had the bridge to work readiness skills program, which really helps people to gain the skills that they need to be, um, gainfully employed. And we had two adults that earned their high school diploma last year. And one person who participated in our citizenship test prep, um, got their citizenship. Um, so a lot of good things there. Another thing about community ed is we help improve the quality of people's lives. And so during all of those months of shutdowns and closures in our society, we really worked hard to provide people with a lot of free opportunities virtually. Um, we shared links to museum tours on our Facebook page. We also provided families with lots of ideas for child-friendly recipes. Um, art, art programs that you could do with your kids or games you could do in the backyard. Um, and then also the art center did a great job of providing kids for families. Um, they just would drive up to the art center and then someone would come out. It was, uh, they'd put it in their trunk and the person would drive off. Um, one of the neat things they did, and you'll see the picture here, is they provided a free family clay kit. And so families would pick up their, their kit and then they would go online. And then we had a person that taught them how to make their own clay whistle. So a lot of ways of reaching out to people in low-cost, free, um, avenues. And then part of community ed is, is helping people create a sense of belonging. Um, some of the things that we did last year, uh, we were fortunate to be able to do early morning lap swim and we did that from September through May. Uh, we had to follow all the health department requirements, which required that people would register in advance for a specific lane. But we were booked every single week. Um, we know people appreciated the opportunity to come in and exercise together. Another thing we were involved in was the Rural Equity Summit. Um, this was a really successful virtual event. It was held November sixteenth and seventeenth in twenty-twenty. We had three hundred and twenty-five people attend. They were from seventy-seven different cities in Minnesota. So it was a really far-reaching event. Um, there were forty-five different speakers that we had and that was, uh, translated to twenty-six different breakout sessions. So a really popular event where we could provide people with a way to learn and grow together. And then the last thing, I have a picture here on the bottom, is of our Spark Mobile Art Studio. This program was, um, made possible through, uh, grant through Prairie Lakes Regional Arts Council. Um, we were able to provide free art programming through the summer to a host of kids. We served two hundred and forty-six children in our community. April Malfers was the art instructor and she did a phenomenal job. We met in area parks. We also met at apartment complex playgrounds and then at manufactured housing development locations as well. Um, it was really a neat opportunity for us to be able to help kids learn, um, not only about artists. And, and she really focused a lot on artists of color, but also to help kids be able to process some of their feelings through the last year. And then, um, we were awarded, um, a, um, a project award from the Minnesota Community Ed Association for this project. So it was really great and we hope to do it again next summer. So those are just some of the ways that we served people over the last school year.
Fantastic.
We are so fortunate to have you leading our community and family education department. I know that you have a lot of passion for our community and in everything you do, you, you have a huge heart for our students and our community members. And it just comes through. And also the work that you do on highlights as well, um, keeps the community engaged. And I know that you work really hard to have that looking like it does and to be filled with great content that people are really interested in, look forward to receiving. And, you know, this, this report too is a great example of, of your great writing and inclusion of pictures and, um, I just. of pictures, and I just really appreciate the, the work that you do, and especially, I know that, we, we had some days, didn't we? Okay, how, how are we gonna do this? I don't know, but you always seem to find a way to do it and to keep everyone positive and moving forward, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. I have a great staff. I couldn't be able to do any of the things that I do without the people that work with me, and that, it's a privilege to work here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will jump back to our action item of the 2020-21 audit. Business Manager Regner.
Thanks, Ben. Have with here tonight Tom Ollinger from Abdu Solutions. I hope I got it right?
Yep.
They had a name change just last year. It used to be the Abdu Iken Myers, and they've changed their name and logo. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Tom and let him do the presentation and any questions that need to be there.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Well, thanks, Tim. It's nice to see everybody again. I was probably here a couple of years ago in, in person, so it's kind of good to be back in, in person and be able to go through this. So as I kind of go through my presentation, certainly feel free to ask any questions as, as we go, and I'd be happy to answer those. So kind of getting started, you know, just kind of our overall audit responsibility and opinion. So as part of the audit, we do a risk-based approach. So beginning of the year, we, or beginning of our audit, we take a look at where we feel like various risk areas are, and we do additional testing related to that. Keep in mind, we don't test every single transaction. We just kind of do it based on the risk and then making sure that we, through confirmations and various things, that we, we test the numbers appropriately. You know, I think we have a few audit findings here, but you know, overall, the audit went, went well. We do have an unmodified opinion, which basically means a clean opinion. And then we also do some testing on Minnesota legal compliance. So that's, are you following the state statute guidelines that are provided? So we go through a checklist, looking at deposits and investments, conflict of interest, dispersments, bonds, and other miscellaneous items there, and we kind of go through that and, and make any notes on that, on top of anything related to the student activities account to, in there. So, and then also, we did have a single audit this year, which basically means that if federal funds are over $750,000, we do some additional testing of that audit, of that program. So we did, we did do that and, and had testing related to the single audit, and there were no single audit findings related to that, but I can kind of go through a couple of the findings that we did, we did go through. So for the 2021, I mean, the good news is, is we got rid of a couple of findings from last year, and then we have, have a couple this year. So similar to last year for 2021, we have a financial statement prep finding. So that's just to make management aware that we did prepare the financial statements. This is something that's, that's common there. We do have management go through the draft of the financial statements and kind of review that, but we just have to note that, that we prepared the financial statements. I think we're still kind of working through some of the segregation of duties on the food service side of things, so encourage you to kind of keep reaching out to us, and if there's anything that we can help with that, to kind of keep that moving around. And then we also had some year-end audit adjustments. Once again, this is something that's kind of common. We help, you know, with the, with taxes and grants reconciliation at the end of the year and the receivables there, which can sometimes get to be a little bit of a complicated formula going forward. So we did, we did do that for this year. For 2000, the good news is, we got a combination of getting rid of the collateral finding that we had last year, so that was, that was addressed this year, and then also the student activities finding, compliance finding there, that we did eliminate that. So we certainly want to continue to work with the school district to help in any way to, to reduce these findings, and if there's anything that we can help with going forward, we'd be, we'd be happy to help. One item here, as we see later in the presentation, that, you know, we have a cash and investment balance increasing over the years. So one thing to note is, you know, there can be an opportunity to diversify investments just based on cat, overall cash flow and stuff like that to increase your overall interest rate. We all know that interest rates are not the greatest right now, so it hasn't been a real big issue, but if interest rates start moving up, you know, I think that's certainly something to look at if a, a longer-term investment, you know, is, is feasible for a higher interest rate. That's certainly additional revenue for the, for the school district. So like I said, there hasn't been a huge gap between the long-term and short-term investments, but who knows what the future will bring if, if things change, so just kind of keep that in mind. Okay, getting into some of the financial statement numbers, taking a look at the overall ADM per general fund expenditures. As you kind of see, there was a, a drop in enrollment this year for 2021, but you know, overall, you kept the expenditures pretty, pretty flat from the previous year. The overall ADM per general fund expenditure was about $13,400, which is up about $900 from the, from there. Couple of things to note there, that it, we did see an uptick in the ADM just because of the additional ESRS and GIRS dollars that were offset on that. So, so really, you know, kind of keeping those expenditures flat has been pretty good considering the, the drop in enrollment that we, that we had there. You know, I think the other thing I take a look at is, what does the general fund balance look like? You know, if, if that's dropping along with the enrollment, then we have to kind of look at addressing that going, going forward, and, and we'll, we'll take a look at there. But you know, I think, I think just schools across the state, we've seen an increase in that, in that dollar threshold just because of the additional federal, federal dollars that came in. Taking a look at the overall general fund budget to actual, and this will kind of show what our increase in fund balance was for the year. So at the, at the end of the year, we did have an increase in fund balance of about $1 million for a total of about $9 million in fund balance. Couple of things here, revenues did come under budget by about $190,000. You know, nothing too major in an overall $30,000 or $30 million budget there. And expenditures did come under by that 1.7 million there. You know, about 1.1 of that 1.7 million was really from operating costs, and then the other $600,000 was from capital costs, which partly is a spend down of your long-term facility maintenance dollars that you have there, too. So combination of that, you, you pulled some of that out of the restricted, and that's where you kind of see your, your unassigned dollars increasing because a portion of that was coming from restricted. Taking a look at the next page, the overall general fund balance. So as you can kind of see, we did have that uptick of about 5.2 million. Now, this is the, the unassigned there, so combination of that million increase plus the dollars that you spent for the restrict, the long-term facilities maintenance really caused that increase in the unassigned portion of that, and that's kind of has your operational side available there. So, so certainly good. That's another thing that I've seen, a, a lot of schools have had an increase in that fund balance, so that has been a trend for this 2021. As we get a little bit later with some of the metrics and projecting out, you'll see, I'll have to kind of make a comment, because our projected out is based on historical data. I think everything is going to kind of tilt upwards as we, as we move forward for next The overall general fund balance did increase this last year, and it's had a, a nice increase over the last two years. So we're currently at the 32%, which is really kind of right in line with where Region 9 and the statewide averages are for overall, overall fund balance. General fund revenues per ADM, you know, the, the state dollars were, were about $11,000, which is kind of above where the Region 9 is. You know, I think this is mainly due to, to additional special ed dollars that we have. So that's why you're a little bit above the average. So it really kind of comes down to your mix of students and the needs that you, that you have there, too. Federal, federal was up this, compared to previous years, but I would say that is going to be in line with the state and region for next year, just because that is something that we got more for this year. And then the overall, the overall local sources, which a, a portion of that is included in the, is levy there, we're, we're kind of below those averages with the region and also the state. Taking a look at the property taxes on the next page, per ADM, you know, overall, per ADM, we're, we're below both region and statewide averages by, by quite a bit. But if you kind of take a look at the next two, is really what the impact is on households and then also just the overall $100,000 per market value. The, the last one there that we have for the home value really kind of shows the impact of the citizens. And though, even though you're lower there, there is, there is a little bit above the averages there. So keep in mind with the market value, you know, that really kind of comes into play with what is the mix within the city, whether it's commercial or ag or, or other things compared to other areas in the region, too. So you know, if, if it's lower with commercial, that this is probably going to creep up for, for you guys, and that's kind of the case, case here. Taking a look at overall general fund expenditures, as we had talked about earlier, they've stayed pretty consistent over the last, last four years. You know, I think overall instruction was about 65% of these expenditures, and prior year was about 66%. So the, the instruction part has stayed pretty consistent year after year, and if you kind of take a look at the bar graphs, they're, they're really consistent between the years. General fund expenditures by object code, you know, once again, the, the big part here is, is salaries and benefits, which make up about 75% of your overall expenditures within the school. Here's a couple graphs of just kind of showing where you fall in a percentile with other districts. So overall general fund expenditures, we did see an uptick in 2021, as I talked about earlier, with some of those additional federal dollars. As of now, it kind of has you fall in line with where the statewide averages will be for next year, but I envision that dotted line is going to go up at a steep, steeper slope for next year with all, all of those, but you should pull in, you know, kind of right around those averages on, on where we're at. Elementary and secondary instruction, as you kind of take a look at that from 18 to 19, there's just been a, a, you know, a steady increase over the last four years, kind of really pulling you in line with where, where those averages are. So that's been a, a consistent trajectory over, over the last few years, and I think combination of why that stayed consistent is we had the, the decrease in enrollment, which some of the budget cuts probably occurred with that, but it was offset by some of the ESRS and GIRS dollars that kept that increase relatively. So what this graph would tell me is you kind of really fell in line with where your, where your ADM was going, going over the last four years. Okay, special ed, we, we see an uptick in that. You know, once again, that is just the needs and, you know, where, where you're at with students there, so there was, was an uptick, and as I talked about, we had some additional state dollars coming in for, for special ed. So I think it's just, even though you're above the averages, that, you know, keep in mind, it's based on where your needs are. So you know, just kind of be aware of that, that, you know, the majority of some of that funding is federal and state, but it also impacts some of your general, general revenues within the, within the school, too. So as that goes up, that would pull from additional dollars. Okay, taking a look at the food service budget to actual, revenues came in with the final budget relatively close to, to what was expected, and expenditures came in under, under budget, which resulted in a overall increase of about $250,000 over this last year. So the end of the year, the fund balance is $786,000. You know, I think kind of, you know, certainly keep in mind is that if that does continue to grow, you know, I know with additional dollars coming in there, that there's still that guideline of the three-month of expenditures there, so be aware of that in the future to make sure that that cash balance doesn't get above that amount. Okay, and taking a look at the food service expenditures, has increased over the last few years, and like I said, I, I would say 2021, that dotted line is going to go up at a steeper pace with, with other states or with other schools across the state. Community service budget to actual, we did have a, a decrease, and I, there was a budgeted decrease of about $200,000, and it came in pretty close to that at about $193. There is a deficit in there now with the community service fund of the, of about $46,000, so just kind of keep in mind moving forward on future budgets that, that that deficit is, is being acted on and, and doesn't continue to go in that, in that direction. I know with the community service side, it, last couple of years, it's just been really tough to determine what is out there and just where you're going to be at. So I think we'll keep our fingers crossed. Hopefully, things level off a little bit and, and we can kind of get that heading in the You know, even with the community service, the expenditures per ADM did have an uptick this year, you know, with some of the additional costs, and, but really kind of right in line with their, with the community service, you know, you kind of take a look at this on what, where your programs are at because, and the amount of programs that you have to kind of determine this. So this gives you perspective, but it really, it really kind of comes down to your individual, where you're at and what, what kind of services you provide and where your early childhood is and all that. So this can vary from, from school to school. Debt service, so we have the 2015 building bond, which goes out to 41. So as you can kind of see, that, that is currently the debt, only debt that you have out there. You know, there's going to be a gradual increase in the overall principal and interest payments as we kind of go and levels off in 2027, so kind of keep that in mind. But you know, certainly, the, the debt levy that, that is administered is, is obviously taking care of the majority of this. So at the end of the year, you had about $52.7 million remaining on those bonds, which it's fairly, fairly new, but you'll start spending those down. You know, the good news is, is that, you know, you're going to be reducing that by over $3 million each year in, in the next future years, too, so that will, that will Taking a look at cash and investment balances, you know, with, I think, certainly the increase in the general fund reserves that we have, we did have an increase in the cash, which really makes up the majority of your cash increase there. So you're currently at about a little over $14 million compared to 3, $13.3 million in the previous year. You know, part of that is that $1 million of additional reserves that we have in there. You know, this kind of goes back to that comment, as you, this is the amount that's in there. So if there's anything that you can look at of additional investments, you know, the $14 million is probably not all short-term that you have to have. You can kind of plan out on your needs and your overall cash flow to see where that is to try to increase interest earned. So with that, I would certainly open it up to any questions that you might have. I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you so much. We had a robust discussion last week at the Finance Committee meeting, but I hope they're continuing on questions.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm kind of new to this, so try not to lap out a lot of my questions, okay? But on page 20, so that food service one, I'm just curious, like, so I see that the dip down in 2019, so what contributed to that? Because that seems like an odd year out in terms of the, are you know the St. Peter Schools? Are you, the expenditure by, do you remember?
Yeah, I'm trying to think on that. Well, I, I think there was a, or was that?
Well, 19 was the year, that was the year that COVID got cut short. Well, nineteen was the year, that was the year that COVID got cut short, the three months.
Okay.
And so some of those expenditures, we picked up other places. And, you know, food service, the last couple of years, you know, especially last year, all the meals aren't being provided by the federal government, so that's why the food service fund has done extremely well the last couple of years.
Okay.
And to Tom's point before about the three month balance, we did have that this last year, we put in a couple of dishwashers, we can just spend it down on, and it has to be for food service. And I talked to Emily just today again too, that said, we need to start looking at some other projects and updating some things. So we've got some things on the drawing board, but now that we know the numbers and stuff, we'll, we'll take a closer look at it. But I, I can't remember exactly in two thousand nineteen, but it's probably got to do with the last three months.
That would make sense. Okay. All right, and then I had, well, it says page ten, but that's not really going to be page ten, it's going to be on page eleven. What was this? I might not, oh, I know, it's on page, it's on this page ten, yes. So with the, what, how do, this sounds really silly, but the target unassigned fund balance, where does that target come from? Is that our target or is that a target?
That's your fund balance policy, based on your fund balance policy.
That's based on our policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, the sixty days is kind of the start of it. And then, this is a little off, and we'll talk about that later, because of the LTFM funds, we separate that on the stuff we usually talk about in the budget, they're combined here for accounting purposes, they, they need to put them in here. So it's a little bit, you won't see these numbers exactly in reports, I do, but that's, that's why.
Okay.
And we, we shrunk, the LTFM, if you remember, we did a roof a few years back, and we've been negative in there for a while, we shrunk the negative this year quite a bit.
Okay. I'm still on like phase one of understanding finance, I understood some of what you said there, and I'm really proud of myself, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and then the last thing was, is way at the beginning, on, I don't even know what page it is, because it says it's on page, it's like the fourth page, where it says limited segregation of duties for food service. What was that, what, we just, can you talk that through a little bit?
Yeah, I think was, was that?
We don't, I, I can say.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We've had, we've had this for, since before I've been here. Basically, it's the segregation of duties, we really don't have a lot of people in food service.
Yeah.
And we, we don't have enough segregation duties from the people getting the cash.
I got it.
To depositing it to there.
Okay.
The one thing over the last ten years, we, we get not a lot of cash deposits, you know, most people pay online on credit cards.
Yeah.
So it's really, you know, we don't get a lot of stuff, but there is some.
Yeah.
Got it.
Risks there because of people handling the money, we don't have backups.
Yeah. And probably the last couple of years hasn't been as big a issue, because obviously the collection that isn't there, but.
The only thing they're paying for is all the card items.
Yep, yep, yep.
And now that you don't charge us a dollar to pay online, we all just pay our bills online. Because that dollar was just shutting us all down, and then we'd forget to send a check.
It really went up five days ago.
Did it? So I wasn't the only one that thought that?
No, it, it made quite a bit of difference when we took the fees out. And it helped in the, you know, it's kind of like a lot of businesses, you know, don't take checks and stuff anymore either. It, it really helps in your labor processing.
And I think we could certainly take a look at that on tweaking, you know, even just having a check and balance in place.
Yeah.
You don't necessarily have to have the, all four people looking at it, but I think there's, there's a couple of things that we can tweak with that to, to at least have a check and balance in place to, to potentially get rid of that, get rid of that finding moving forward too.
Okay, that's all for this year. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just had a couple connecting to me, if that's all right.
Yeah.
So on page thirteen, where it's talking about property taxes, and we're talking about the difference between impact per home, and earlier during the truth in taxation, we were talking about equity aid, and that's kind of where that equity aid comes in, when you're looking at the total value of your community and how much of that is based on homes and how much is based on industry or business. And so that equity tries to balance some of that out. Then, on page twenty-one, when we were talking about community service, I just wanted to remind everyone that last year, we did not charge for childcare during the school day, we also did not charge for any of our early childhood programs, and so, nor did we this year. And so as we start to increase our revenues again, we should see that balance out a little bit more.
Yeah, most community service revenue is fee based, and obviously with COVID, that's been changed significantly.
That's all my deep thoughts. Excellent, thank you. Would anyone make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one audit?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one audit.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you so much for coming tonight, really appreciate you bouncing around to other districts on a busy night.
It was a busy, busy night, but that's, that's okay. But no, we certainly appreciate working with the St. Peter schools, and if anything does come up throughout the year, feel free to reach out to us, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great.
And I'd like to thank Tom and Lane and Jay, Jason and Chad, we're here a majority of it. It was a, you know, it's been a trying year for everybody all around with COVID, and things went, went fairly, you know, smooth as they can go, and we've been together enough for a number of years, and so I think we know what to do back and forth, we're just working out.
No, we appreciate that, so, well, thank you. Have a, have a great night, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. We'll jump back to information items, and that brings us to our facilities update with Mark Bach.
Mark Bachman, come on down.
I'd like to just have it noted that in the future, I'd like to not follow the audit. This is just a letdown at this point. So just an update where we're at with operations and maintenance this time of year. Oh, last summer is finally done, and we've closed the books on everything we were doing over the past twelve months, and now we're looking forward to next summer. As it gets cold, we start looking to the warm weather. So our main projects that we're focusing on right now are phase two of the ceiling and lighting upgrades at the middle school. We started that two years ago, but with COVID last year, we didn't know what we could get, what we couldn't get, so we laid pretty low last summer, really just focused on the new ticket box for the CSP fields, that was our main project. So now we kind of crank back up on that, there's two more phases for us to do on the ceilings and lights at the middle school. We're going to replace the district office and early childhood parking lot, move the ADA parking, so that's up closer to the building, so you don't need to walk across a frozen road in the wintertime to get into the school. And we've had drainage issues off the hillside since the addition was put on in nineteen ninety, so we're hoping to address that, not hoping, we're going to address that, and, and keep the west side of the school a little drier, especially with the, if we get a sudden thaw in the springtime, we tend to get water in. And then our other major project is, South finally has its turn to get its tuck pointing done. They're, they're very excited about that, I've heard a lot of buzz. So those are, those are our big, our big dollar items that, that we're focusing on right now, that we need to get out ahead of and get out for bid. Most of the rest of the things we'll be doing will be routine maintenance that we do on a, on an annual basis. Other than that, we're fully staffed. Last year this time, we were looking for a new maintenance person and a custodian and housekeepers to spray everything, and so it's kind of calm right now. Hopefully we keep it that way. I can answer any questions you may have. I can talk longer if you'd like.
I think a big question people might have is, does the coming year have four hundred dollars worth, four hundred thousand dollars worth of construction that would require us to start school before Labor Day?
We are currently looking at five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in construction.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that.
Well, thank you so much for just keeping all of us on track, and, you know, it seems like, cut maybe a slow report for us, but I know that you're always working on this stuff and always projecting out and making sure everything's shipshape, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you for that, and happy holidays.
Thanks.
Same to you.
Enrollment report.
Yes, I think Mr. Rechner is still talking with Tom, so I can go over this. This is something that I wanted us to start taking a monthly look at, and so these are updated numbers. You can see that we're, we're staying pretty level, but for the year, we're, we're below projected quite a few. I do know that we've had more students, I know it's tiny, isn't it? I've got to use my, the strongest point of my bicycle is to sit down. If you look at it online, you can load up and see a little better. I know that folks have started signing up to come in for a second semester. I know that we have about eight that have already said that they are coming back, either from homeschool or from private school, starting after the break, and so I'm hoping that that is a trend that continues, and we start to see those numbers coming back up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions on the enrollment report? I appreciate having it in, in the agenda, and look forward to those numbers continuing. Onto reports, golden principals.
If you remember, last, last month, we started a new trend, where the principal that had the Star's spotlight would also give the principal report. So Mr. Graff has done an excellent job of weaving together all of the stories of our schools for the principal's report tonight.
Hope I don't let you down. All right, so at the early childhood, they have a new section of three-year-old that will be beginning with the ECSE on January third, as referrals come in. They're working on the EC screenings that will be held in February, and they're preparing for the open house for prospective families that will be held in February also, for those families who, who wish to register for the fall. At South Elementary, they just completed their Read-a-thon on November twenty-third, they raised over five thousand dollars, and a special congratulations to Mrs. Winters Kindergarten and Mrs. Mink's first grade classrooms, they are the winners of that pizza party. And thank you to all those who donated for that Read-a-thon. And then the Star Pride team is sponsoring Winter Bingo, and that will be happening tomorrow. At North Elementary, they had a successful winter concert at the high school Performing Arts Center, and that was last Thursday. Each grade level performed six songs. The New Saints Center video came out today, and that showcased North's fifteen super saints and three classrooms that were awarded for responsibility, grit, or leadership. And then, this one is my favorite, the North Star Coffee Shop will be open tomorrow for staff to order, quote, fancy coffees, that will be delivered by students. Now I know why Darren doesn't drink coffee at the middle school. Folgers is not fancy enough. At the middle school, we also had our winter concert series, we're calling it a series, we have four concerts, we had our fifth and sixth grade band led by Lauren Schumaker, our seventh and eighth grade band led by Dave Houck, our sixth grade choir led by Jamie Abels, and our seventh and eighth grade choir led by the new Bree Bergstrom. Everybody did an amazing job, and it's, it's amazing to be able to use those facilities out at the high school. It's just super cool to see our kids' eyes get really big when they go out there for the first time. Our flute choir, continuing on with our music here, our flute choir is actually visiting some local businesses tomorrow to share some of their holiday music. And then the last one for the middle school, our student council is really working on just promoting positive energy at the school, so for the last few Fridays, they've been providing hot chocolate to every student as they walk in the door. Students are greeted with a cup of hot chocolate, and we're getting a lot of, a lot of positivity from that, kids really enjoying it. And then at the high school, student of the month, what, the student of the month was Hannah Woolers, co-curricular award winners, we have the Excel and the triple A awards. The Excel award is for juniors, and that was Fabian Gersbauer and Adriana Bixby received that award, and the triple A award is for seniors, that is Anna Klett and Shay Hildebrand received those awards. And then at the alternative programs facility, we have our first session of high school credit recovery is wrapping up tomorrow, and registration for the second session will open after the winter break and begin on January thirty-first. Rockbend continues to look for additional space, they're going to be touring a modular classroom after winter break, and then their focus in the upcoming weeks will be on high school tran, or transition, as the majority of their population is seniors.
Thank you.
I just have to say, it's always exciting if I pull up to the high school and there's like a sporting event going on, and there could be a concert at the same time, I mean, that's pretty cool, that's a lot of people, but I mean, it works, and it doesn't, or at least to me, it doesn't feel like anybody's on top of each other, because it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I thought the same.
Yeah.
We, we had a lot of parents comment on that, and it was, it was kind of comical, the number of parents who came in, got a program from me, got in the door, flipped around and said, that's not the basketball game, is it? Nope, that's the concert.
Thank you.
Superintendent concert.
Yeah, and I've, I've been there having a meeting in the comments when there's a game in the gym and a show in the, in the auditorium.
And I told you it wouldn't work, and it still did.
Yeah, it was fine. All the people in the meeting were like, what's going on over there? Kids came out of the game and grabbed some pizza, and that was fine too. So I, I want to start tonight talking a little bit about social media. Whether we're talking about Facebook or Twitter or Snapchat or Instagram, any of the platforms, they can be amazing communication tools, and we can stay in touch and we can learn more about, just about anything. And they can also be a devastating tool to both students and adults when they're used for bullying or to spread rumors or make threats, or just share a steady stream of negativity. And like I said, that's, that's true for students and adults alike. And recently, there have been concerning posts to social media, and not just here in St. Peter, but kind of all over the nation. And we, we just ask that families really get involved with their, with their children when it comes to social media, pay attention to what they're looking at, to what they're liking, to what they're sharing, because some of these are, are really hurtful to other students and to adults. And it's important for us to role model positive behavior online too, and on our social media accounts, because our kids see how we interact as well. And so if we're leading the way, that's, that's a great start. And I do want to mention that the school district does not monitor social media accounts. We, we don't have the connections, nor do we have the time to be monitoring that. We do however respond when people share things with us that are concerning and have to do with school or have to do with student safety. So please, if you, if you see something, say something, let us know, especially if it's something that is concerning any student safety issues, we, we want to be aware of that and to, to help families navigate through social media. So that's, I'll step off my soapbox with social media now, and move on to winter weather. So we had a snow day, which I got raves and cheers for, and I just really want to be clear that that's a one-time thing, that in the future, with winter weather, there will be flex learning. However, we plan to make that. However, we plan to make that a yearly tradition, that the first weather event will be what I called an old-fashioned snow day where you sleep in and build snowmen and drink cocoa and watch cartoons is what I used to do, but you know, it's probably more like play video games or whatever it is now. So, in a few days, two more school days, we'll start winter break and my hope is that everyone finds an opportunity to do whatever it is that brings you joy and peace and that everyone has an opportunity to relax and to recharge. I know whenever I'm in the schools, I can tell that the students and the staff alike are in need of this break more than I think I've ever seen before. So, like I said, it will begin on Thursday. We'll be back in session on January 3rd of 2022 and there's much to do in '22, so we need to come back ready. With that bad line, I wish everyone a happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas and a Happy Kwanzaa or just a peaceful, relaxing break. Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent? Let's go around the table.
So, John Carlson couldn't be here with us today, but Vicky's here and I know it's your last meeting and I appreciate having the opportunity to serve with you all these years.
Thank you.
I'm just thankful that people extend themselves, are willing to do this work, so thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is not what I anticipated it would be, so I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be on the board. It's a tremendous amount of learning. Tracy, I can sympathize with you because I feel the same way when I look at the financial stuff, so I just have to learn the ropes and get involved more. But thank you and Vicky, I echo Drew's comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, welcome.
Thank you.
Tracy.
I just want to tack on a little about social media too, and I won't go long on it, but you know, we talked about monitoring our kids' accounts, which we really have to do, but I've lived this world a little bit more than I'd like to admit and the kids are way smarter than us, so I guess my message to the kids is, you're right, you win, you are smarter and you have a lot more fake accounts and all that, but be the one person to not comment or not like it. I mean, that's all we can do and because as parents, it's super frustrating, especially when you find out maybe your kid liked something or did something, but it just, at some point, it has to stop and it's sad that it is. Okay, so now COVID wasn't on the agenda and like I said, kind of confused because I thought it was going to be, but in the future, I think I would propose that we at least audio record the study board sessions to be able to listen back on what things were said. I would like to see that happen. We can talk more about that. In terms of COVID, like where are we at in, like, what are we shooting for before we will readdress masking at the middle and elementary?
First, just making a note on the study session.
I mean, because people, I mean, obviously, people are asking and with us not talking about it, it's almost, you know what I mean? So I just want to know, what are we looking at? We're looking at that vaccination rate, we're looking at community transmission, we're looking at all those, but when are we going to feel comfortable? Because you know, we're one of very few districts that are doing the contact tracing and requiring this masking. And the contact tracing to me is like, to go on that a little bit, if the county has determined that contact tracing hasn't been worth it for them, right? They haven't been getting the results that they wanted. People weren't cooperating, right? That's why they probably stopped doing it. So they decided not to use public tax dollars to employ people to do that because it wasn't producing a result that was worth it to them. Because if it was producing a result that they thought was beneficial, they would still be doing it. So why are we as a school district using taxpayer dollars to employ people to contact trace when the county isn't and other schools aren't?
So, I can't speak to why the county isn't doing what they were doing last year. I don't know. I will say that of the districts I'm aware of, they may not be calling it contact tracing, but they are notifying families when they're exposed, which is, I mean, that's what I think contact tracing is, notifying people when they've been exposed.
So, we're handling it the same as what we would say someone has strep throat, the doc goes home saying, "Are we going to tell Johnny he can't be here because he sat next to Suzie yesterday?" Because that's contact tracing, so sending.
That's quarantining.
Okay, and are we doing that then?
Yes, we are requiring quarantining when, well, first off, when people are positive, we require that they're gone for 10 days or they're feeling better and haven't had a fever without fever-reducing medication for at least 24 hours. And then if they have had exposures, if they are vaccinated, then they don't have to quarantine. If they are masked, if both students are masked, then they don't have to quarantine. But if they are unvaccinated or they weren't wearing a mask, then they need to quarantine for, well, it's 10 days, but they can take a test after the fifth day and come back. So, you know, we aren't having to have students quarantine much because about 70% of the high school is vaccinated and they're wearing masks besides, and so we haven't had too many students that have had to quarantine. And then at the elementary and middle school, everyone is required to mask, so even when there has been a positive case, we haven't had to have those quarantines. So even though we are doing that, we haven't had to do it too much. I would say the quarantines that we have had have been cases that are in the home and so then they're.
So I guess, so just replace what I said at the beginning with the word quarantine then instead of contact tracing. I still, when people ask me, "Why are we having, why are my taxpayer dollars going to do this duty that the county isn't doing and the schools around us aren't doing except Mankato?" That's where I'm struggling and that's why I'm trying to figure out why we are doing something beyond what the public health is doing.
I think contact tracing in the sense that these people are talking about is, you know, I go to the store and somebody there has it and they're trying to trace back, A, where that, where the case got transmitted and going backwards in time to see how that was, that virus was transmitted and they, someone else knows a lot more about this than I can, but they can do that by actually testing the virus that is in people's systems. But what we're saying is like, hey, we know that your kid sat next to this other kid at lunch and we can't tell you who that other kid is, but we can tell you that they may have been exposed and you might want to test your kid. As a parent, oh boy, I want to know that and I think that we owe it to parents to let them know and then make their own decisions about that.
And so then if they make a decision that, "Thank you for telling me, but my kid can't go back to school."
Your kid can't go back to school if they are not vaccinated and they did not have a mask and that other person did not.
And again, that's beyond what the other schools are doing. So that's what I'm, no matter how we phrase it, we're still going above and beyond that because other schools are not doing that. The Bulldog Hockey Team, the other schools that we play with are not doing that. So, I mean, we're not going to get anywhere. I'm just saying again, this is why I just, this needs to be on the agenda. I mean, and I know that the public comment, it's not fun, but us not talking about it is not right and it needs to, it needs to get said and it needs to get talked about.
Just so the public is clear, we talked about it at length at the last study session. So we did talk about it there.
And from now on, we'll, I'll at least audio it if anything, but, okay, then the other thing is, is the COVID testing kits, any kid can just take that home? We give out medical testing kits?
They are available for students at the schools, yep. They're both students and staff.
Okay, I don't know. I kind of, it's just, it's a medical thing. I mean, it should be taken care of medically, not with us. I mean, I don't know, I just found some in my kid's backpack and I was like, are we handing out pregnancy tests now, too? Like where does it end?
We did not hand them out to students. They had to be requested.
It's a medical test, though, Ben, that's the part I'm getting at, but I'm done now. I won't keep us here forever. Obviously, I have a lot of feelings, but I just hope to see that that is on the agenda for January for us to have another discussion about what the criteria is for these kids to have the option to mask. And you're right, a lot of them will still choose to do it and that's so awesome that we allow them that choice.
I'd just like to bring up the fact, can I go with what Drew said? John's not here, he's on vacation. It has been a pleasure to serve on the board with him over the years and I can't express how much I've learned from him regarding what it means to sit on this board. Vicky, it's been just as much a pleasure serving with you.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything that you've done to help out and move us forward, so.
Well, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, I guess I would like to say a couple words. One thing is, a lot of people comment on me and they say, you know, "I'm pretty quiet and I should talk more and I should..." And I try to tell them, you know, "That's kind of my training." I mean, I, but sometimes it can be a little dangerous, too, because I don't miss much. I hear everything that's going on. So, that being said, I do have a few words I want to say. No, really, what I would like to say is, I would like to thank everybody for allowing me to serve on the school board. I really appreciate it. It has been a great time and I would also encourage anybody that has a love for the community, our families and our kids, to please run for the school board. I was very surprised when, you know, you come on and you think, "Oh, I'm going to change this, I'm going to do this," and it really always doesn't work out that way because the school board is regulated. We have to follow the laws, we're regulated, there's guidance that we need to follow and sometimes what we would like to change doesn't always come that way and it's not always as easy as what we would like it to be. But that being said, I appreciate everybody and everything that you guys have taught me and it, there is, there's a lot of learning to it, but thank you.
Well, Vicky, thank you so much. I think everybody brings their own superpowers to the school board, but you've really brought a perspective with your professional career that we just haven't had before on the board in my tenure.
Oh, you guys are making me sad.
We were better for it and I just thank you for the last four years and from the Mondays that we'll be in this room, I will just envision you in that sweet car of yours driving through the desert laughing.
I am looking forward to it, so.
While the rest of us have air vented from the outside directly on our heads. So thank you so much and John, I think John served 12 years, is that right?
Yeah, quite a while.
And to think about how much our community and our district has changed, we've changed multiple superintendents. We went from a fun balance of 20 minutes to a healthy fun balance. We made real strides in taking care of our staff and our staff has turned over. When we started on the board together, we had probably two-thirds in the last third of their career and now I think it's the other way. So the district has gone through a lot of change and you and John have really been good stewards of that, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I also want to mention Bruce Davis. Bruce Davis is a longtime KNUJ institution, his kids are St. Peter graduates. He did so much with the radio station for our activities and just for our school district in general and I just wanted to tell Bruce and his family that they're in our thoughts and hearts tonight, so thank you for that. And I think the only other thing I have is to announce upcoming meetings. We have a school board meeting on Monday, January 3rd and that will be a little bit of a longer one because we have our organizational meeting as well where we welcome a couple new members and take care of setting our agenda for the year. And then that's at 6:30 in this room on January 3rd. We have a regular board meeting following that and then we have an upcoming negotiations committee meeting on January 5th at 6:00 PM in Conference Room AB and the Vikings are up 10 to nothing apparently, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, meeting adjourned.
I just voted.
Seems fair.
Ah, the spirit of Christmas.
So Tracy, are you?